...in order and we'll stand and do the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thanks. The first to do the roll real quick.
Mr. Hupkey.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. March. Mr. Hamm. Mr. Bowden.
Here.
Mr. Heck.
Here.
Okay, before we proceed in the absence of President Cross tonight, I'd like a motion from the board to appoint an acting president for this meeting.
Is the motion to appoint Trustee Heck?
Trustee Jones has made a motion to appoint Trustee Heck. I need a second.
I'll second it.
Trustee Bowden, second of it. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Hamm.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Heck, it's all yours.
Trustees in your packets, you have the minutes from the September 12th meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, a motion to approve the minutes.
Still moved. Second.
Motion by Trustee Bowden, seconded by Trustee Jones.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Present.
Mr. Heck.
Present. Also in your packets, you have the bills. Accounts payable and payroll, payroll ending 9, 10, 16, and the amount of $47,538.26. Accounts payable from the general fund of $52,233.76. Motor fuel tax, $2,326.23. Water sewer fund, $29,955.76, for a grand total of $84,515.75. Any questions or comments on the bills? If not, a motion to approve the payroll.
I have a question. Under Maltese Nationary Incorporated, the $350, what that is for?
I believe that was for the... He helped us with the design and drawings of the entrance signs, because we had to have a professional drawing to submit to IDOT.
He wrote all the specifications, but... Pack it together.
Do you want to see it?
No, thank you. Okay.
Is there a motion to pay the bills?
Motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Hupkey, seconded by Trustee Bowden.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes. Move on to item four, public comments and/or questions, any good from the public that's not on the agenda later? None. Reports of committees, police chief report.
Nothing for you today.
Engineer report.
Just an update about what Trustee March asked about last meeting, about the intersection of Blaine and Mill, where there's the gutter and it's causing a problem for cars. It, there's no easy fix. It's not something simple. The ground is pretty flat there, and in order to raise up that gutter, we create a drainage problem on the north side of the intersection. The water would pond in that area. We could look at going further back on the streets to try to transition it slowly, but it, I mean, it's not something that's going to be cheap. I was estimating at least $25,000 to do something like that. So, it might be better to be done with a street program, or... So, maybe some of the Public Works Committee can, you know, discuss further.
Question I had. How come that couldn't be cut out, and a culvert put in there, and then just paved over the top of?
Because the culvert would have nowhere to connect into.
You couldn't run the curbs on either side of the street down into the culvert to pass through?
Usually a culvert is for a ditch, where the water can outlet along the ditch, but just... There's not, you can't put a culvert there, because it's curb and gutter. So, you wouldn't have anywhere, the culvert would be too low, it would be below the grade of the road. So, it wouldn't go anywhere. That's why the gutter was put in there in the first place, to get the water across. Kind of the only option.
It's not good. It's bad. I mean, when it was first put in, I'm amazed that somebody didn't say, "This is... This is not bad." If you had a kind of a back injury or surgery and you went across that, I guarantee you, you would feel the agony.
I know we kind of mentioned in the interim, putting up maybe a sign, you know, saying dip, until...
If you crawl across that, same thing. I mean, if you, if you go for five miles an hour just doing it, even you're thrown side to side, it's... It's a, it's a mess.
Anything else? The Public Works Committee, Public Works Committee met September 19th. Just a few items on the agenda. We... Committee's currently working on the village tree ordinance, trying to revise it, making some additions. Then we'll go back to legal, and once we get everything in place, we'll bring it to board for approval. The 2016 tree project, the planting of trees, we budgeted, we're hoping to plant roughly 100 trees. I know Trustee Jones had certain areas that he would like to plant those 100 trees in, and I kind of wanted to do some of the first removal of Emerald Ashport trees that we've been promising people, so I think we've compromised, and we'll do some of each when we get to that. And then sidewalk grinding. Instead of replacing all the sidewalks that are trip hazard, some of those, we're going to try to grind, prolong the life of them, cut costs, and Bob Hanke gave us an update on that. We're going to try to do it through the winter when there's no snow cover, and hopefully next summer with an intern. And that was about it for Public Works Committee. Any old business? None, we'll move on to new business. Item A, special event. Peetown American Legion requests permission for military days, October 1st, with street closures and amplifier permit. You undo it, or am I...
No, I think he... I don't know much about it. I was hoping they just... They, he was here and he left, and I know he spoke to me, you know, last year they had military days.
Is this where they bring all the vehicles and...
All the vehicles, and they have the... A group of singers that look like the Lennon Sisters, that'll be out there again this year. They got them back, and they have just a lot of unique things about the services and the equipment, so they have quite a day planned out, so just the street closure for that day, and the amplifier permit.
That's for this Saturday, right?
That's for the Saturday after I'm coming.
Any commotion approved? Motion by Trustee Hupkey, seconded by...
Second.
Trustee Jones.
Question.
Yes.
You're approving all of it, the special event, the street closures, and the amplifier?
Yeah, we can do all of them.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes. Next item is the Peetown Girl Scouts have requested permission to canvass the Village for the Fall product program. 10-1 to 10-23, Helping Hands 10-29 to 11-5, and the cookie program will be January 1st to March 31st.
Hello, we're the Girl Scouts from Peetown.
Yeah, can you guys all state your name, please?
Oh, I'm Sophie Stack.
I'm Caitlin Lexa.
And I'm Sharon Stack.
You have a Sophie Stack and a Sharon Stack.
And a Caitlin Lexa.
Before you guys leave, there's a sign-in sheet over there. Would you print your names on there, so I spell more? Thanks.
Go ahead.
So, we are the Girl Scouts from local Peetown troops, and we are requesting permission to go door-to-door in the village for three months. The first event is the fall product sales, October 1st to the 23rd. Jumpstart, cross-sell, fundraiser, selling nuts and candies and magazines, door-to-door sales, and a day to deliver order. This event is Helping Hands Food Drive. It's an annual scout event to help stock the Peetown Helping Hands food pantry. Drop-off bags weekend is October 29th, and the pickup bag day is November 5th. The last event is the Girl Scout Cookie Sale, the largest fundraiser for Girl Scouts, January 1st to April 1st. Door-to-door sales, typically first couple of weekends, then a day to come back to deliver.
Okay. Any questions? Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Trustee Jones.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Hupkey.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
And Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Good luck to you. Good girls. Item C is the audit report from Smith, Caitlin, Dexter, and Mom.
I'm Marcy Holford. Thank you for having me once again. And I'm going to take a few minutes of your time, and we're going to concentrate on the first couple of exhibits, exhibit A and B, because there were some significant changes due to the new pension reporting. So, first off, we did issue a standard unqualified opinion, which is what you guys have been receiving since we've been doing the audit. But if you would turn to page three, exhibit A, I want to point out a few things there, and then talk about this pension recording and how it's affected you guys. Your cash actually increased over last year by about $405,000 cash and investments throughout the village, so that was a good thing to see. Your accounts receivable was relatively flat in the general governmental funds, which is your general fund, your motor fuel, and the capital improvements. The, I'm sorry, in your general fund, the motor fuel fund did increase slightly because of some money due from the state on the ROP 50 project. Your water and sewer property taxes, there are no, essentially no receivables, they're about $5,000, because the bond got paid off, so you no longer have to levy for that water bond that you've been paying here, got paid off this year. What I'd like to point out to you, though, is there's a couple new lines this year. If you would compare this report to last year's. In the middle of the page there, you see a deferred outflows of resources related to pensions. A total over on the right-hand column of $821,911. And down towards the bottom of the liabilities, you see a net pension liability, right-hand side, is almost $4.8 million. That is monies that we talked a little bit last year. That is a reporting change. But the governmental standards are now requiring you to report the liability that used to be in the footnotes, putting it on the face of the statement, so you can see where you stand with those liabilities to the pension funds. Everyone across the United States is supposed to be doing this, so you will start seeing the fund balances towards the bottom there, your net position. You have a negative $2.4 million net position in your unrestricted funds, because of that liability. That liability was generated by both your IMRF fund and the police pension fund. The net liability, you can see there are a lot of pages in the back that are new, pages 24 to 31, and pages 37 to 41, I believe it is. But if you turn to page 31 a minute, and I'm jumping here a little bit, and we'll come back to exhibit B. But page 31 at the bottom summarizes these numbers that are on the front couple of pages. And it shows the IMRF plan, and then the police pension plan, and the total. So, your police, or I'm sorry, your IMRF net pension liability for IMRF is $338,000. Your police pension net liability is $4.4 million. So, that's the total of that $4.8 that comes to the front. If you go to exhibit B on page four, and again, if we would compare to last year, you would see that your expenses in the top left-hand column there that says expenses, total primary government expenses are $4.484 million. Last year, well, that was an increase of $738,000 over last year. $509,000 of that is due to this pension expense that is required to be reported. So, other than the pension, your expenses increased about $220,000 or so, $230,000. Your charges for services were also up about 4 percent. About 3 percent of that is due in the water sewer funds, because of the annual increase in your rates. And you did receive some additional capital grants, because of the ROP 50 work going on. A little bit of good news is your sales tax did increase, $68,000 over last year, and your state income tax is increasing slightly, about $35,000. So, those numbers from the state and from the local economy are moving up slightly. Unfortunately, because of the pension information that has to be recorded, in the bottom right-hand corner, your change in net position total is a negative $244,000. Last year, you had a positive $354,000, so it's a $600,000 swing. Again, $509 of that is due to the pension. That pension, those pension numbers, I know David talked with you guys a little earlier, those are actuarially determined numbers. IMRF hired a firm to do all the IMRF entities throughout the state, so those numbers came from that firm. And then Tim Sharp did the police pension here. So, those amounts are coming from their assessment of where things are at, what rates to use for investments, so on and so forth. If you look again, let me find the page a minute, at the bottom of page 27, and at the bottom of page 30, you'll see we also have to disclose, the IMRF fund was using what they call a current discount rate of 7.49 percent, which led the actuary to that $338,000 pension liability. If the discount rate is higher, meaning investments, and David can speak to this probably a little better than I am, but if the investments increase, that rate increases, that liability goes down and actually becomes an asset of $201,000. If you get 1 percent less, that liability goes to $991,000. In the police pension fund, that's on page 30, we're at 4.4 currently. If we go down to 4 percent, we're at $5.4 million. If we go to 6 percent, we're at 3.7. So, numbers look significantly different than they did last year, and I wanted to point that out to you. It will continue in the future. That format's going to stay the same. You will have a liability that you will be recording. If you pay additional into those funds, hopefully that liability will come down. If investments go up, knock on wood, I don't know that that's going to happen, that liability would come down. On the other hand, if it swings, you know, the investments don't perform where they think they're going to be, that liability is going to continue to go up. On page 22, you will see, again, this is long-term liabilities. Your bond did get paid off in the business types there, the general obligation bond, but you will see that the net pension liability is now recorded there also. And then note six on page 24, there are restricted net position. These net monies are restricted for the uses listed there, motor fuel. You've got some developer fees, drug seizure fees, our funds, and then some tax liabilities. Those monies can only be used for those purposes. That's what causes, you know, that's part of why your restriction, your unrestricted balances are negative, because of that liability, and then these monies have to be set aside also. So, the rest of the report is essentially what you've been getting. The schedules in the back are your budget actual numbers. They did not change dramatically from what you guys are used to seeing each month. We had a few year-end adjustments to post in it, but the big thing was the pension information this year, so. Want to thank everybody out here. Donna and Marcy help us tremendously while we're up here for the audit. Bill helps us with the pension part of it, the police state report and all of that's been filed. The AFR, the annual financial report that needs to be filed with the state and with the county, Marcy has. All we need is approval, so I don't know, Donna, I know she got that last week, and I know she said she may not be here tonight. We just need a signature there. We can send that through to the state, and then we will have everything filed and done. So, questions?
It appears our staff's done a real good job of doing things correctly.
Yes.
To make the job here.
Yes. I've said, our, my staff loves coming up here, because we're going to get answers. It's going to be correct. You know, we do find a few things here and there, but not... It's the typical year-end adjustments that we're making for receivables and payables and that type of thing. But we always get answers. People know if they don't know, they get off the by the way and get back to us and let us know. So, it is a very good place to come up and work.
With the exception of the liability for the pensions?
Yes.
How would you say our overall position is?
Overall, other than that year, you've been pretty strong. I mean, last year, if you would have looked, you had $1,001,000 in your general fund, positive balance, unrestricted. Unfortunately, it gets wiped out because of that pension. And that's what the governmental standards board was wanting people to see, is because that number, you know, we know what the state of Illinois, we kicked that can down the road, and nobody wants to know what the number is, or, you know, they just ignore it. You guys are much better off than the schools are and the state. I mean, the schools are having to pick up TRS numbers that are just phenomenal. And then the state portion that's due, you just, you just sit here and you're just flabbergasted. I mean, this is a few things that we do, and we're seeing $40 million over the school district. You go, "What? How was that ever going to get paid?" So...
Is it even possible to catch all these things up in your expert opinion?
And I don't have an expert opinion. In my humble opinion, I don't think so. But, you know, the state's not allowing anything to change, and, you know, if you can't change taxes, you know, and then... On a personal note, it drives me crazy that those of us in social security, they can change, but we can't change the state pensions, so, you know, we, there's a liability out there. We have to figure out how to deal with it and get the monies in to get it done. Now, when people are under tax caps, and that's what David and I were just talking a little bit about, whether that police pension is under tax, I know IMRF is under tax caps. I don't know about police pension. I don't know if you found anything yet. But we can find that out for you. But with tax caps and with people not wanting to increase taxes, it's tough. You know, what do you cut? What services, you know, I'm afraid service is going to have to go at almost nil, and then have people start saying, "Okay, we're willing to pay this for that," and that type of thing. But it's going to be tough to get out of.
Illinois already has the second highest taxes in the country. In most places, real estate taxes are 1% to 2% maybe. And here, many instances are approaching 3% and 4%, which is ridiculous. So, you can't just keep going back to the well to...
Well, you can go to a different well. And I could, I would not make friends if I was at the state, but you'd need to start taxing retirement income, in my opinion. We're going to become a state full of retirees that don't pay any state income tax, but you still want the service, so... You know, people are fleeing the state because of the taxes, so you got to do something, and...
One every 12 minutes.
I'm sorry?
One every 12.
One every 12 minutes, okay. So, you know, we've got to start looking at other income. And I know it would not be, I would be voted out after my first term, if not before, but somebody needs to get it straightened out, and, you know, you could deal with it. You could have a base of some sort, but that's a whole other story, so... And I'm not running, so... And nobody's asked my opinion, so... Anybody else have questions? If you do at all, I don't know how long you've had this to look at. If you've got questions at all, our phone number is in there. You can give me a call. You can email us. Give Donna a call, let her know. We can get back to you, whatever. All right?
Thank you, Marcy.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work you've put into it and the staff.
Thank you.
Item D, pension board for the police pension, Mr. David Rock.
Well, she already gave you all the numbers. The items that I wanted to highlight are the levy requirement for 2016 is $256,000. The contribution from the village was $171,000, so it was under the actuarial requirement. The levy requirement for this coming year actuarially is $311,000. That's based upon a 5 percent investment yield, or at 1 percent or thereunder, based upon last year. And in addition to the $311,000, request us for another $52,000 to make up the difference between 5 percent and 1 percent on the million-two in investment dollars that we have, in order to avoid the levy requirement to continually be basically an exponentially increasing amount. When you look at the years that I've gone here from 2011 to 2017, it's gone from $136,000 to $311,000. So, we're into that exponential rate increase due to the fact that the investment returns are not there. And the remaining term to amortize the unfunded liability goes down by one year every year. Any questions? The comment on 4 percent, you know, 3 to 4 percent, Southern Cook County, 20 percent on commercial property is not uncommon. 20 percent of value for real estate taxes.
But probably rental income offsets a lot of that. Not that it's really a ridiculous amount, but...
You're talking on a, if you're on a triple net renting, it basically also doesn't piece through driving down value. But if you're just an owner of the property, you're not uncommon to see 20 percent. And it's not uncommon for people to, basically, if they're looking at only being in the area for a few more years, to just stop paying property tax, because they aren't going to be able to sell it, so why boil it into some kind of cost in real estate taxes and let it accrue against the other property and figure out three, four years? Because it can't have a, it's going to take three years for a tax sale, so... And then the property is basically worthless at that point in time. You just walk away.
Maybe get Mr. Madigan's firm to protest this.
That's part of the game of Cook County.
Any other questions? Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Moving on to item E, award bid for the 2016 sidewalk program. You want me to do it, sir?
I can do it.
Go ahead.
The village received bids on September 20th for the 2016 sidewalk program. We only received one bidder this year, however, the bid came in under our estimate of $50,000. The bid came in at $48,187.0. Because the bid came in below our estimate, below the budget, we're still recommending to award. We've also worked with this contractor in the past.
So, they done work here? Yeah.
They did last year's sidewalk.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
And I talked to public works, they were happy with their work, so...
Only one bid, is that just because everybody's busy, or this wasn't a good enough program, or what's, what you're feeling?
Typically, we get two bids that are decent prices, and sometimes we get a random couple dollars that are really high. I called the other contractor who typically bids, and they said they were just very busy and they couldn't meet the October 31 completion date, so that's the reason I had to do it.
Can you penalty them if they don't meet that completion date?
In our specs, we call for liquidated damages if they don't meet it, so the village can, you know, it's not always enforced, depending on weather or, you know, I mean, but...
Reasons.
It's up to, yeah, it's up to the village to enforce it or not.
If I liquidate damages?
It is, um, it's a set schedule in the IAT spec book of, you know, a certain amount per day that they'll be paying if they don't finish the work.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion by Trustee Jones, seconded by Trustee Hupkey.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
And Mr. Higginson?
Yes. Item F, proposal for professional engineering services for the East Corning Avenue water main replacement project.
This is Jim Betnarwitz gave me a water main project for Robinson to design. It's from Route 50 to Third Street on Corning Avenue, for a new replacement water main, and also detaching and putting services connected to the eight-inch water main that's ready along Route 50 from, from Corning to South Street. So this is for design engineering. The agree, or the proposal is for $38,000.
When you replace that, is that cutting up the street, or is that going through the parkway?
It depends on the actual location. We don't, we don't know for sure. Likely be in the parkway, but it could be in the street. Once we pick up topo and, you know, well, we could see if directional bore is a better option, or open cuts a better option, so we haven't determined that yet. We'd also, you know, talk to public works about how they feel about it as well.
This is just for the engineering studies, 38?
For the design engineering, the specs, the contract plans, and everything.
Where are we, budget, is that budgeted? This is all funded by us, I'm assuming?
It was all funded by the shore program.
I believe Jim told me the budget was around $45,000 or $45,000 for this.
Okay. But there's no matching money at all from the state, this is all funded by us?
Even if there was, the state, nothing he checks out.
They did, they'd bounce. Yeah.
And what problem does this solve, just quickly?
I guess this, it's only a four-inch line that runs along the street, so it's just kind of for the overall...
Pressure.
Pressure, and it may have been breaks in the past, I'm not sure if Jim said that or not, but there probably breaks along the line, and the pressure being small, it's going to connect the system better.
How old is the existing line in there now?
I'm not sure.
Jim said it was pretty old, that's why they keep getting the breaks, so...
What's the likelihood that see of putting in a new line?
I'd have to get back to you on that. I don't typically do the water main work, so I could ask someone for...
Are there different grades of materials for more longevity?
It depends on the soil, you know, ductile iron and PVC are the most common, so I think the last time P200 water main job, they may, we may have done PVC because of the soil type, so that'll be something we'll look into.
Have you had any experience with that, Kevin?
I'm not on the water side.
Oh, okay. My thought process is that if...
I know that PVC lasts about more than a third longer than the old pipe and everything.
And what's, what's the cost spread between PVC and...
It's actually less expensive than some of the iron pipe and things.
And why would anybody ever use iron pipe?
Because of the soil. Oh.
Oh, you didn't, the PVC?
Yeah. Yeah, because more pliable, it moves, you know, iron pipe is more steady, so...
And when you go to four to eight, is that enough?
Basically, while you're doing it is, yeah, it is enough, and while you're doing it is that it'll also increase the pressure in your hydrants, and that's important, obviously, to firefighting, and of course, people will experience better pressure in their homes too, so that's, that's a good thing.
Make a motion when you approve.
I'll second that.
Motion by Trustee Hupkey, seconded by Trustee Bowden.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Higginson?
Yes.
Thank you, Trey. Sure. Item G, set Halloween trick-or-treat hours for the village. What day is Halloween on this year? It's a Monday, and typically in the past, we've always been four to seven PM. Any discussion, anybody want to change or do something different, or otherwise a motion to approve?
Motion, second.
Motion by Trustee Jones, seconded by Trustee Bowden. To set for four to seven.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr....
Yes.
And Mr. Higginson?
Yes. Item H is waiving all fees for the Fall Fest community garage sale. I believe they did this last year. Anybody that wanted to have the garage sale, we waived the, what's the fee, $5? We waived the $5 fee, and if they let them know early enough, didn't we put it on a map, or no?
I don't know, I wasn't part of that.
Do people have to come in and get a form and fill out that they're participating?
No, they just, there's an email to Nancy to participate, that is my understanding, or, yeah. So I think Nancy can...
I thought they had a list of the addresses or the amount.
They did last year. I don't believe you put the regular community one that the chamber does.
Is there a motion to waive the fee for Fall Fest community garage sales?
Motion.
Motion by Trustee Bowden, seconded by Trustee Jones.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Higginson?
Yes. And item I is the village entrance sign proposal. I know the board has wanted to put up the entrance signs on Route 50. We've had some hangups, I guess, with IDOT where we have to submit, but now we're working on private property right through versus that. The mayor still wanted to see these, tried to go up this year. Trustee Jones got a price from Maltese Masonry to do both signs. He did the sign out by McDonald's to construct both masonry signs. The amount was $19,900, which is under the amount we have to go to for bid, right? We have to want to get the bid, so...
Is Mr. Steven Maltese on the committee for the planning zoning? I believe so. And would that be a conflict of interest?
He would just have to abstain for a minute.
He's not elected, that's an appointed committee.
That's an appointed, and it's, I mean, it's amazing, it's $100 underneath a $20,000 bid for a growing state.
Well, I want to check on that, make sure there's not a conflict there.
I think he's the other part for the village.
That's right. He doesn't, they, they have to approve that, don't they?
They're planning zoning.
I'm planning, I can't say.
Who, who has to?
No.
No, not planning the zoning, the board has...
No, they don't have, planning the zoning doesn't have...
This is the village's thing, right?
Yeah, okay, it doesn't go, it's not going to go to, because it's a village sign, otherwise... Okay. Now, I still, I still want to, I still want to check that. I don't think that there would be, but uncomfortable saying no right now.
One thing that we avoided some grief, we may have discussed this, is by staying off the dates right away. And it's 40, I got to break down, 40 or 45 feet up by the FS station, it's 50 feet by Pearls. So if we stay off there, we don't have to go through all that rigmarole, which will expedite things a lot. Which is where we had cement drying to get approval?
Yeah, and the other thing is, IDOT may not allow this type of sign because, yeah, because it's made of stone, I don't think, like, according to what their sign policy, they won't allow it unless they give it to a very...
I just think we need some other bids, just so that proves that there's no conflict of interest. If you have, correct me if I'm wrong, correct, but if you have two-thirds of the board vote to approve, you can waive any competitive bidding?
You can waive competitive bidding, yes, by two-thirds. Just, so...
I mean, just, just going back, as far as competitive bidding, I get into work for me and the department, which picks what product, and we know we'll get a good product that'll last a long time, and it'll be built right.
We did get another bid. I had gotten you a bid last year, and the signs were $35,000. I'd have to look to see if we still have that, remember that?
Yes.
Yeah.
That offer was from Brooklyn, right?
Well, actually, they were from Mantino, but only because they were given the name by, they did the Mantino signs, and all the entrance signs were Mantino, so that's why we called them. But anyway, I mean, we can, whatever you want to do, I can do.
I think we should run with it. We want to get it done, we know we'll get a good job. Price is fair.
Well, we can approve price, I would like to get the conflict of interest thing off.
Yeah, we'll check that out, we don't have any illegal.
Just to make sure.
We can okay the price, though, right?
Sure. You can actually apply, you know, approve it, you know, subject to, subject to our making sure that there is not a conflict. He's sitting on the ENZ community, that's what it is.
Yeah. So once you give your blessing, we're ready to run?
Yeah.
So you need a motion, please?
Yes.
I will move, I approve this, subject to ENZ, not conflict of interest.
Motion to approve the proposal, subject to legal conflict of interest. By Trustee Bowden, seconded by Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
No.
And Mr. Higginson?
Yes. Any questions on the press, Karen left? Any other correspondence, communications petitions?
I have a question. The April 2017 election packets are ready to be picked up for anybody who is interested in running for office. They can be picked up at the clerk's office, and the water bills will be mailed this Friday.
I believe the homecoming parade is Friday also, right?
And we will be opening down Village Hall at 3 o'clock, because we have a lot of participants being here going.
Cool.
And Village Hall will be closing at 3.
Anything else?
If not a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Trustee Hupkey, seconded by...
Second.
Trustee Bowden.
I think I used my latinx today.
Be quiet for the rest of the year.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
And Mr. Higginson?
Yes. Meeting adjourned.
Hey, we still have the camera. No, you don't watch it. Oh, yeah, well, I, you know, I don't want you, I'll just get outside.
How are you? I think it might be fun.